Okay, call the order, Town of Florence, Planning and Zoning Commission, regular meeting. Ms. Benitez, will you take the role, please?
Yes. Commissioner Adam? Commissioner Kapalongo?
Present.
Commissioner Pro?
Present.
Vice Chair Frost?
Present.
Chairman Pronzo?
Present.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, free, democratic, and just as for all.
Okay. Moving right on. Discussion approval, disapproval of amendments to the regular meeting conducted on August 19, 2021. Open up to the commission, comments?
I did make the change you requested, Commissioner, Vice Chair Frost.
I don't think everyone really knows what that was.
Okay. I added "public" to "public defenders building" at the end of...
Under future agenda items.
Under future agenda items.
It read, "County received review comments for the new defenders building." Just to make it completely correct, I just submitted that we should add "public defenders building" to make that right.
And the changes have been made in the minutes to be signed. I didn't quite get the chance to do it for the packet.
Okay, I have one other comment. If none of the other commissioners have anything. We talked about, and I'm going to get the terminology wrong because I got it wrong the last time, but we talked about double-wide and single-wide trailers, units that come in on axles. We were talking about, should they be allowed or not allowed in area that's not annexed yet but will be as a part of our general plan? And the intent of the conversation was that we were building in problems that we would have to face later, such as we have here in historic district with non-conforming properties. None of that language is in here. So I'm going to table the minutes. I did not get a chance to review our last meeting's discussion, so I couldn't listen to it and give you better words. But I'm going to table it so that you can go back, and whoever does the minutes again, I would appreciate it if that conversation's in there, if it would please be included. I think it's important for the council, if they read the minutes, to become aware that these non-conforming properties are hurting us and we're just building problems in for Okay, moving on. We have a discussion approval, disa-- oh, sorry. Presentation approval, approval with conditions or denial of a design review request for a new sign at 850 South Main Street. And Ms. Benitez, if you would, give us your professional presentation.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, Vice Chair, members of the commission, we received a design review request for a replacement of the signage at 850 South Main. It was, that area is a RV park known as Shady Rest. It is no longer Shady Rest, it's under new management, it is called The Westerner now. You might have noticed some changes in paint color and cleaning up in that area, which is good for that redevelopment part. But the owners requested that they are able to replace the signage there on the freestanding sign. They're not removing the structure of the freestanding sign, they're just removing the signage itself. And they're going to place two new signs, one on each side. They're going to use the existing metal brackets that are on the sign to insert it into the signage structure. And on top, they will have LED solar floodlights pointing down onto the sign and towards the ground. The total area is 40 square feet for each sign. This meets the allowed signage or total area for a freestanding sign that is on arterial, which is 55 square feet. So it's less than that maximum, and the dimensions will be eight by four. And the presentation, you see that what the sign will look like, The Westerner, it will not have, under new ownership, that will be taken out, it'll just be the title and then the address on the sign. Now, staff did find that the sign may be taller than allowed in that area, but because the sign is already in place, that is a legal non-conforming sign, and it is allowed per our code. So staff finds that this request is in compliance with our town codes, and the Planning and Zoning Commission may approve with the listed conditions within the staff report or deny the new sign request for The Westerner at 850 South Main.
So the sign is allowed because of we're grandfathering the existing structural members?
Correct. The sign itself meets all of our requirements. The sign's structure is a legal non-conforming because it is a foot higher than it should be. On those main roads, the main arterial, that is Main Street, it's supposed to only be 10 feet, but it's 11 and 3 inches.
So again, we're allowing it, we're grandfathering it because of the existing structural members?
Correct.
And our code allows that?
Yes. If something's been there and it's grandfathered, as long as we're replacing like for like, it's in terms of signage, then it is allowed. They're not doing anything to the structure itself.
I missed that. Nice find.
So are there any further questions that the commission has?
It's open to the commission.
Just a curiosity, the 11-foot was an existing allowance? It was allowed before, and it was changed to 10 feet? Is that what happened?
I don't know if it was allowed, but that sign has been there since the park was developed?
Yeah, let me answer that for you. Our sign code up until a couple of years ago was really very sparse. So we took the time to meet with manufacturers, meet with large sign companies that do them along the highway and whatnot, with different vendors, and this became, that was a composite of what now exists as a decent sign code.
Oh, okay.
So the sign that's there now was there when somebody said "whoa" to the wagon. So that's how we got there.
I question the actual design of it, and maybe it's just me being persnickety, having a sheriff's badge on there, I don't know, it might imply some kind of tacit connection because it's just popped into my head. I'd question that side of it. And then from a really designed perspective, the boot looks ridiculous, but that's just me being a graphics guy, but the sheriff badge on there, I don't know, something about that just strikes me wrong.
I thought the same thing when I first saw it. I don't know what the regulation is about doing that, but it did strike me that having a sheriff's badge on the mobile home or trailer park didn't seem right. Again, I don't know if there's any code that says you can't or shouldn't do that, but I agree, it's an eye catcher, and it made me think twice.
It might, someone might misconstrue it and think the sheriff's department condones this or endorses it.
Okay. Then there's nothing in the code that says you cannot have certain designs on the sign? So I can't really...
We could deny it outright and say, "We don't like the sign."
That's up to the commission.
This almost looks like one of those sheriff's badges that you buy for $1.50 for your grandson when you go to one of these western places. I mean, it says sheriff on it, but...
No, I understand what you're saying, I get that, and I do see that. But I'm also thinking about, you know, we get a lot of people move in down here that have, they have no idea what a sheriff is, they've never seen it before. So just throwing it out there, just saying.
I just interpret it as sort of the western ambiance. Yes.
I'm wondering, I know in HDEC we did a lot of sign reviews, and generally the requester would be at the commission meeting, and when there is a discussion like this, oftentimes they would just opt to remove it, right, without heavy hand or requiring or anything like that. So maybe that's just a discussion. I would not say no to this over the sheriff's badge. I mean, I'm fine if it goes up, but if that's an option that they would entertain, that would be great. If not, fine.
Okay.
And it is, I read it is on wood, because I know they have that plastic thing up there. They're not going to put the plastic thing on wood.
No, this is, they have a company doing this sign on professional wood, so it's not just some plasterboard they got from down the road and stick it in.
The owner's not present.
No, they are not. They had another meeting to attend in Casa Grande. They have, the owner has multiple RV parks or has taken over multiple RV parks, so he has different projects going on at the moment.
So where the hamburger at the steak dinner?
That I don't know.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I think it would be fair to say, as Ms. Benitez has stated, the actual, what the sign says and how it says is not actually part of your approval. However, like we do in HDEC, it could certainly be passed on with the recommendation. As far as the concerns that you had, when it gets into trademarking and things like that, of course, the signages and the companies, you know, cannot depend on trademarking. But I think it would be fair to say that we would pass on the concerns that the commission has to them. Again, like you said, like not heavy-handed or whatever that is, just pass on that, very similar to what we do with the HDEC.
Couple of years ago, there were some laws about fiddling with signs, wasn't there? Something that was passed, you would know, Ms. Benitez?
Correct. In our training, there was the case that happened in Gilbert with churches, and you couldn't prevent certain signage for churches or other affiliations, everything had to become equal. That was more about what the sign said, though, and that you could or could not place that. It was less about, it was really about the design of it.
A lot of that was placement of A-frame signs on a temporary basis in the right of way, too, I believe. Would it make everybody happy if we took, if we asked them to take the word sheriff off the badge so that it doesn't imply anything that way?
Yeah, that'd be, yeah. And again, I'm not trying to be a stickler about this, it was just a pop in my head.
I'll make a motion to that effect, then. I move that we approve, that we approve case PZ-21-47 for the new sign request at 850 South Main Street with the recommendation that the applicant remove the word sheriff from the badge.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Vice Chair Frost, second by Commissioner Kapalongo. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed. Moving right along. This is an exciting night. Discussion approval, disapproval, oh, God, I keep reading that over and over again. Presentation, excuse me, approval, approval with conditions or denial of a design, design review for a new sign package for Big O Tire at 3445 North Hunt Highway.
Big O Tire has put in their permits for building. They're looking to start construction, but they needed signage. And as per the design review that we approved for the building back in December of 2020, they had not put signage on that design review, and they were going to take signage to the commission later. So here we are with the design, the sign package for Big O Tire. And this is for five new signs, two of them are panels on a monument sign that's already existing, and the other three are wall signs on the building itself. So here is just kind of a site plan of where the building, wall signs will be. So it'll be on the north, the west, and the south side of the building. And the total area of the north is 48.5 square feet, total area of the west one is 34 square feet, and the total sign area of the south one is 48.5 square feet. All of these are below the linear square foot requirement set within the town code. And here's the location of the monument sign. It is on the furthermost entrance/exit of this commercial plaza near Anthem. And this is what it looks like from going south towards town on Hunt Highway. So it'll have two panels, one for each side of this monument sign, and as stated before, this monument sign is already in place by the plaza itself, and it'll show Big O Tire, and the dimensions fit within the middle panel, so it's 1 foot 8 inches by 4 foot 10 Based on all of the information we are giving, staff finds that this request is in compliance with spigot town codes, and the Planning and Zoning Commission may move to approve with the listing conditions within the staff report or deny the new sign package for Big O Tire.
Open it up to the commission. Questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, just a question of...
Is your mic on?
Is that, anybody better sit closer, is that better? Okay. Just a question, I think we're all very familiar with what Big O typically looks like as we travel around and see them. Is this any different than what we would normally expect to see on Big O? I didn't go out and compare this against a store or anything, I just kind of have in my mind what I typically see.
No, this is your basic Big O Tire and where they place the signage.
Any other questions or comments? This is way too easy.
I didn't want to skip another meeting just because it was too easy.
This is because you did such a good job. We have a motion.
I'd make the motion that we approve the Big O Tire request for signage.
Second.
Who's second?
Me.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Pro, second by Commissioner Kapalongo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Can't wait for Monday night. This should be so much fun. Presentation, information only, and you really just have to gloss over it because I think we're going to get a lot of it Monday night. The general plan update?
Yes. We are having our general plan community meeting Monday night, 4 to 6, or a little bit before 6. We will have our open house with our consultants here with the boards, like we did previously, to go over what they have information-wise, what the land use maps will look like, or the different options people have had. We do have one that has been chosen that residents have agreed with the most, I believe is land option C, land use option C, but that will be gone over in the meeting, which is from 6:00 PM to 8, maybe longer, based on the discussion with council and the commission, Planning and Zoning Commission. We will have the consultant give a presentation, and then at the very end, we will also have one of our water consultants give a brief overview on what they found as well, in accordance with the general plan. We're hoping that doesn't overshadow anything, but it's related, so we wanted to give just a very short taste of that.
But this is simply an input work session?
This is a work session only, input.
Thank you. Moving along, projects related to redevelopment plan. Do we have any?
We do have a couple. We have a multifamily residential looking up here in Territory Square, just north at the community center. I can't speak much more to that because of quiet hush-hush agreements. Another is, we have a design review going to the Historic District Advisory Commission for a new building called the Old Florence Tap House on Main Street. It'll fill the Panal County, the vacant Panal County lot, just catty corner of the Silver King Hotel. There's that vacant lot with a bunch of benches.
Been hearing about it forever, can't wait.
So they have a design review application to go to the HDEC commission next Wednesday, if anyone wants to turn up for that. Another project we have going is doctor's office on 200 South Main Street is looking, or a person is looking to infill that building with a doctor's or clinic office. We're going through pre-application meeting next week for that. Another, we have someone looking around for a tire shop on Main Street, and they're looking at the old Circle K's, just south of Butte. I don't know if that one will go through, but that one has been brought to community development attention.
Which one?
They are looking at the one on the east side of Main Street, if you're going north.
Okay, that's privately owned. That'd be good.
They're looking at it, but they haven't gone into negotiations for prices or anything like that.
Okay.
Another good thing, I guess, to add to the redevelopment in the downtown is how quickly things, buildings are switched out if they lose an occupancy. We have a building, I believe, at 240 North Main next to Faith's Creations. Someone left the suite to the left of that, of Faith's Creations, but then it was immediately infilled with a new store called Loft. And then, of course, we have the new coffee shop just down past the Clark House, which is open for business and has been going strong with all the events in the past couple of weeks.
You've been busy.
Yes, we have.
Good. But just as a matter of my own personal interest, do we ever, or in your shop, do you ever talk about how to handle the dilapidated abandoned buildings or the overgrown vacant lots? Does that subject ever come up?
Once the legislation we tried to pass for abandoned and vacant, vacant lots and abandoned buildings was turned down...
By our council?
And further upstate legislation, nothing hasn't really gone further.
I want to share something with you, just to show you how this impacts. I shared it with Mr. Frost just a couple of minutes ago. I have a 5,000-square-foot, fully restored historic adobe. It appraised for $180,000. It appraised for $180,000. Do you know why it appraised for $180,000? Because the neighborhood around me is a disaster. So it impacts me personally. It's not just my passion that I feel is a part of restoring Main Street, but it impacts us financially. That house should be worth $600,000. And yet the topic somehow doesn't come to the surface. So I don't know what the magic wand is, but it's out there somewhere. Other communities do it. I'd like to see us at least take a swing at it. So thank you, Ms. Benitez.
I'm follow-up on a comment on that. I know that Councilmember O'Neil did make a suggestion as representing the core area, and he had had many complaints from those citizens, and it was brought to council that we needed to clean up the town as a general statement. And then I know when we had our barbecue challenge contest, there was a concerted effort to clean up Main Street, but it stopped only at Main Street and at Butte, right? And so directly across the street, our ambulance company is hardly visible. And I agree with the chair, I also live in the district, and you know, it feels like, I understand, it's a very difficult position for all our code enforcement people, but we're always told we have to turn in our neighbor in order to get code enforcement on this. And I am not understanding when it's so egregious, I mean, it is very egregious around where we live, that the town can't generically, just like they went up and down Main Street and handed out citations, right? I don't know why it can't be on a quarterly basis or twice a year where the seriously egregious cases are not addressed, because the chair is correct. And as we try to develop Main Street, it is perfectly obvious to business coming into town that the Main Street looks good and a block after it is horrific, right? And so it does, it hurts the whole town when we have this kind of light.
So who has the authority to, you know, initiate those citations? Responsibility and authority, is it the town manager, is it the mayor?
No, if I can, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, and Commissioners, so of course, we're aware. So we do have a code enforcement, and code enforcement, it lies underneath of community development. So right now, we're working a lot of cases, so we have stepped up a lot of cases. A lot of the cases that we're working right now are reactive, so they're reactive to complaints that are filed through our office or through the website to that. We are also working some, trying to be proactive on those. So I will tell you that in recent, the recent month, we've stepped up the code enforcement a great deal. We've revamped some of the processes that we're doing. Right now, we, and I don't know how much we can discuss this off because it's not part of it, I think it's just our discussions, but we've increased, we now have more of those cases in court than we have in many years. So we've stepped that up. We do understand what you're saying, we do agree with you on what you're saying. It is our goal to step that up. We've stepped it up quite a bit lately, we're not done with that, but that, our intent is to continue to step up even further on that.
That'd be great, for my pocketbook and the welfare of the town.
No, it's very, very understood by the mayor, by council, and by staff.
How about the town manager, is he on board?
Sure. Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments?
One backtrack on the HDEC meeting, because I had noticed this on the board outside. Apparently, it's a special meeting on a Tuesday night, is that correct? October 26th, so it's not a normal Wednesday night.
Yes, you're right. I apologize. The HDEC meeting is on Tuesday, the 26th, because HDEC is going to the Historic Preservation Conference the 27th to the 29th. So the meeting for HDEC is on Tuesday, the 26th, at 6:00 PM. Thank you for the...
And that will be where?
That'll be here, in the town council chambers.
Okay, moving right along. Seems like you hit everything, but future agenda items?
We do have a rezoning case coming to the commission November 4th. We have a owner who has four different properties, and he wants to rezone two of them because they have, they're connected, but they have two different zonings. And he wants to rezone in order so they're similar zonings, so he can continue with development or selling them, or combining. He had various options he shared. So that will be coming for public hearing next meeting. So that will be coming for public hearing next meeting. We also have Phil Bartos, they're going through design review process right now with staff. We have sent some comments to them, and we'll see if we can get them on for the next meeting, if not, but that is something that is coming to the commission soon for design review. And we also have an extension of the Desert Rock Church. They're looking to add three more classrooms to the current building that they had brought to commission a cup, I think, a year ago or two. But that, it depends on how soon they get back to me on revisions that we had sent. But they have put in for design review, and they're going through the process. But that's what I have. Those are some future projects coming to the commission.
That's enough. Is Mr. Harmon still with us?
Yes, he is.
Okay.
Is this, is this the time to ask for an agenda item as well?
Excuse me?
Is this the time to ask for an agenda item?
Yeah, why not?
I, I see that activity is kind of increasing out at the seventy-nine bridge over the Gila River. It'd be nice to get an update of what's the timing and what's going on and what the impacts will be with traveling public as that, as that work happens out there, so maybe on a future-
On the seventy-nine?
Mm-hmm. Over the Gila River, the bridge over the Gila River, with the replacement and whatnot.
The one we've been talking about for years.
And then I guess one, one other thing, I'd, I had sent a question to Maricela about the grading work that's happening out on the, across from the Florence Hospital, and the, the response was that it is part of the charter school's high school development. And I, I guess my concern is, is I travel through there in the, when they are picking up, dropping off children, they are stacking cars two hundred yards deep on Hunt Highway. And I'm just hoping that somehow we can rectify that situation before it gets even worse as they add another school, because it's not bad right now, because Hunt Highway is kind of constrained, but as Hunt White, as the traffic grows on Hunt Highway, I think we're going to have a real problem if we don't address that, that right now.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add to that as well. Hunt Highway at Arizona Farms, that intersection, there needs to be, that, that whole, there's so much traffic, and it's going to increase, as Chairman Lonnie said with this, this new high school. But that is such a dangerous way to navigate through Hunt Highway and Arizona Farms there, just, you know, this side of the sheriff's office. When are we gonna, or when is the county or whoever's responsible for that area going to, you know, further develop Hunt Highway?
It, it needs a left turn lane. What happens is they come to a full stop from sixty miles an hour, so somebody can wait for traffic, go by and make a left turn. I don't know if it's, that's pretty close to our border.
Arizona Farms is our border-
Yeah.
-in some parts on the northern part.
The northern part is our-
Our jurisdiction.
Uh-huh.
Arizona Farm is the, sometimes, the northernmost part of our jurisdiction.
So could we request an update of Hunt Highway construction timetable?
Yes.
On future agenda item? Great.
Thank you.
Move, move along. Call it a public seems ridiculous, there's nobody here, so I'll open and close that. Call to the commission, current events only. What fun things do we have coming up? What is the new news? I've got zip. This is a talkative bunch. I will close the call to the commission and ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Frost, second by Commissioner Capolongo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It always passes.